Item 334.
Yes, item 334, consideration of recommendations from the Charter Review Committee regarding a potential ballot measure related to Charter Section 43D, Citizens Review Board on Police Practices, CRB, and related waiver of council policy 000-21. Note that this item is not subject to the mayor's veto. We do have a number of speakers, two in opposition, and it looks like two in favor on this item.
Item 334 consists of recommendations from the Public Safety and Livable Neighborhoods Committee to amend Section 43D, Citizens Review Board on Police Practices. This item was considered at the Charter Review Committee, June 15, 2015; Public Safety and Livable Neighborhoods Committee, September 7, 2015; Rules Committee, January 12, 2016; Public Safety and Livable Neighborhoods Committee, March 23, 2016; Charter Review Committee, April 20, 2016; and the Rules Committee on May 18, 2016. March 23, 2016, the Public Safety and Livable Neighborhoods Committee unanimously approved and forwarded the recommendations you are considering today, which are to rename the Citizens Review Board as the Community Review Board on Police Practices, replace references to the city manager with mayor and city council, and add to the charter that the review board shall review all cases involving in custody deaths and officer-related shootings. Additionally, for your information, though it was not for our consideration, the committee also recommends to the mayor's office the following changes in policies and practices that could be implemented now and codified in the municipal code if the voters approve the above charter changes: extend the terms of the volunteers from one year to two years; develop a process by which community review board members can audit Category 2 complaints and pull specific cases for review; include funding for independent counsel to provide additional advisory capacity to the community review board; I'm very pleased the FY17 budget we approved does contain this funding; provide additional community review board staff resources; and enhance the accessibility of policies and procedures. And finally, the committee's requested the city attorney conduct legal analysis as to whether more information can be provided in the case review rationale and complaint letters, and to bring forward a contract for independent counsel for the community review board to the full council for approval in fiscal year 17. With that, I will turn it to public comment.
Beginning with the speakers in opposition, Michael Russell, followed by Ann Barron. Then we'll turn to speakers in favor, beginning with Kate Yavendidi. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, hello. It was unclear to me exactly what I was in opposition to. I guess what we're looking at is having the city attorney write a proposition for the fall for this, based on those recommendations. So I guess I am in opposition to that in that I want to increase that. I'm here speaking today as a voting citizen on behalf of activist San Diego in support of the Women's Occupy San Diego recommendations to require that at least four things be added to the proposition for the Citizens Review Board to be, other than just the name change and those other things that you mentioned. First of all, I think it's very important that the Citizens Review Board or the community review board of the police must represent the same demographic diversity as the people of San Diego, and should, and people should be appointed by council members, not the mayor. That's a definite conflict of interest, based on the fact that we've had former police chiefs become mayor. Also, the Citizen Review Board must have subpoena powers and be able to depose officers. And the budget should be independent and be large enough for investigators and legal counsel when necessary, and should be able to call grand jury investigations, independent of the Internal Affairs Department. Also, all complaints against the police must be reported to the CRB, and they should have their own independent online database of citizen complaints that any citizen or community member can access. Finally, the fourth thing is that all body cameras footage that must be accessible to the community review board, because as the council knows, the police have denied those body cameras to the public and even to the press. So we have to have someone who has independent oversight and access to those body cameras to be able to review incidents that are, can be very brutal. And finally, I think that in the recommendation by Women to Occupy for a four-year term is vital, because you need consistency, and people have to learn how the board works, and it should be rotating terms with a two-term limit. And there should be ombudsmen budgeted, so that the people bringing issues before the board can learn the system, learn how to submit comment, and follow through. And I think this is a one-time chance, because we haven't reviewed the city charter in 85 years, to do this, so we should do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann Barron. Then we'll turn to speakers in favor, beginning with Kate Yavendidi, followed by Martha Sullivan.
Hi, Ann Barron. I'm a member of several activist groups in San Diego, and I'm not actually opposed to what you're presenting. I'm just really, really disappointed that it's so tepid. It is so weak, in the face of what's happening today with policing around the country. And Women Occupy and other supporters and endorsers have worked so hard for over three years to get a full, robust, independent, transparent CRB, a community review board that has its own independent counsel, not someone that's recommended by the city attorney, but really the ability to go out and hire its own city, its own independent counsel. And why I'm so concerned is because I'm seeing pictures like this now coming out. So we're not talking about, you know, your average cop on the beat. We used to refer to them as peace officers once upon a time. We now have the full militarization of the police here in San Diego. This is terrifying. And I have not heard one councilperson come out in protest. You may have, I'm hoping somebody did, to see the full assault on Barry O'Logan after the Trump rally. Now, I know there's investigations going on, we hear that all the time, but this is the face of fascism. And nearly everyone in this room, at one time or another, our forefathers, our foremothers, have been the victims of this kind of fascism, of full control of the civic sector by a fascist police force, under the control of a government. So I'm hoping that at least some of you have protested what happened in Barry O'Logan after the Trump rally. Another reason why I'm totally concerned is because of, we have Patricia Kral. Now Patricia Kral is a San Diego police officer, and she has an Instagram where she's out there going, "Come on, riot," because she got these pretty, new, shiny military equipment from Homeland Security, and damn, didn't she want to use that? So this has me terrified, and we need to make sure we have proper oversight of our community's police force. We need a peace force, not a police force. I'm willing to work further on this. 2018, perhaps, we'll have a chance to make this stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Turning to speakers in favor, beginning with Kate Yavendidi, followed by Martha Sullivan, followed by Martin Eider.
Good afternoon, Council President Leitner and city council members. We've talked many times before, and I want to thank you again. As you know, I'm a member of Women Occupy San Diego and a member of the National Lawyers Guild, and I join with the two opposition speakers in saying, I don't know, it's hard to say that we approve or that we are in opposition. I want this ballot proposal on the ballot, and we appreciate that. We've had many conversations, and we've had a lot of time to talk and meet with many of the staff members, and we appreciate the very small, minor changes that have been put on this ballot proposal. We also appreciate the suggestions to the mayor, many of which were our suggestions. We also appreciate that there's money in the budget, which was part of our recommendation. But as everyone has said, and you've heard, and we'll say it again and again and again, this is baby steps. This is not enough. This is nowhere near what the city of San Diego needs, as far as having a truly independent, accountable, responsive, transparent community review board. So we are hopeful that we've been having this dialogue, and that this dialogue will continue, and we will continue to dialogue with you, with all of the city council members, assuming with this proposal you will all now be part of responsibility for the community review board. We will continue to dialogue with the mayor, and we have some other plans as well. We will certainly continue to monitor what's going on with the community review board. We will work with members in the community to file complaints and follow through that process and see what's going on. We will take Councilmember Emerald's comments, as she says almost every time that we're here, about recruiting members to the board, and I will comment that, in fact, we have done that, and almost everyone we've recruited has been rejected. But we know that there are many people who are in front of the mayor now to be appointed. So we certainly hope that this proposal will be accepted and put on the ballot, and we want the city council member to know that we will support that and hope that it gets voted on, but that we will continue to work as, with all of the 27, 28 endorsing organizations and all of the community members that we've been working with, we will continue to work for what we really want in the way of reform and accountability of the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha Sullivan, followed by Martin Eider.
I'm just going to read an excerpt from a speech that was made at the Black Entertainment Television Awards this last Sunday night by Jesse Williams. It was a very powerful speech about, really about the Black Lives Matter movement, and there is a couple of paragraphs in this that I think are very relevant to this. You know, I signed up to speak in favor of this just because at least it's something. It'll be, you know, it may be called a community review board instead of a citizens review board, and perhaps the city council, working with the mayor, can actually accomplish some substantive changes. But I would like to leave you with this quote. Now, what we've been doing is looking at the data, and we know that police somehow manage to de-escalate, disarm, and not kill white people every day. So what's going to happen is we're going to have equal rights and justice in our country, or we will restructure their function and ours. Now, I got more y'all. Yesterday would have been young tamer Rice's 14th birthday. So I don't want to hear any more about how far we've come when paid public servants can pull a drive-by on a 12-year-old playing alone in a park in broad daylight, killing him on television, and going home to make a sandwich. Tell Rekia Boyd how it's so much better to live in 2012 than it is to live in 1612 or 1712. Tell that to Eric Garner. Tell that to Sandra Blonde, Bland. Tell that to Dorian Hunt. What we've been saying to this council for the last two years is we don't need to wait, you know, for another really horrific tragedy here in San Diego. We can do something more substantial than what we're doing, or otherwise, you know, it's a boiling pot.
Thank you, Martin Eider.
Martin Eider with activist San Diego. I live in city heights, and I know and recognize a lot of the tension that exists between community members and those that live in the community. What I want to speak most specifically to is, first, the proposal that is being made, I think, has been described in what I fear is a very toothless kind of proposal. It really does not make the fundamental changes that allows people in the community to register and to follow up and actively seek justice. Some of the, what was just mentioned by Martha, in terms of incidents that happened elsewhere, we have those very incidents here in San Diego that have not gotten any kind of resolution in the name of Victor Ortega, for one, what we know and have seen in the video clips of Fardoun Nahad gunned down in the sports arena district. We need a CRB that has that subpoena power and that can really be independent, and I would urge you to put some teeth into any kind of proposal that goes forward, so that we can prevent and we can gain a lot more of the citizens' respect. I would also like to speak to the kind of policing that Ann Barron talked about in terms of the militarization of the police. As I said earlier today, I thought it was a shameful display of police force when riot police, basically in trying to disperse some 30 or more protesters, peaceful protesters for the most part, declared an illegal assembly and marched them down in military fashion. This is not what should be happening in a democracy. It's the kind of thing that we abhor in the images of Chinese dictatorship or in Eastern Europe. And this is representative of the kind of plans that the San Diego Police Department is making. I think they came dressed for a riot, they came prepared for a riot, and they created a riot by allowing and mixing into what was a free speech zone for the anti-Trump, mixed and allowed those people into the area, and created the very situation that would call for them to take action. I think it needs to be investigated. A hundred thousand, 200,000, $300,000 was spent on that action. We should find out how and why and who ordered that shameful display. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public speakers on this item.
Okay, again, thank you to Women Occupy and those who have brought this matter to our attention, and to Charmaine Mosley. I note she was trying to say till this was done. She's our executive director of the Citizens Review Board, the police department, and the members of the review board for responding. I'm very supportive of the recommendations before us. I am especially supportive of the mayor and council sharing the authority and work of establishing the rules and regulations for the review board. When the board was established, the city manager, a non-political office, performed that function. With our change to the strong mayor, strong council form of government, it is appropriate that there are checks and balances and shared authority governing the Citizens Review Board. I suggest a motion that we approve the recommendation from the Public Safety and Livable Neighborhoods Committee to amend City Charter Section 43D, to rename the Citizens Review Board as the Community Review Board on Police Practices, replace references to the city manager with mayor and city council, and add to the charter that the review board shall review all cases involving in custody deaths and officer-related shootings, along with adopting staff recommendation.
Heck, so moved. And many of these ideas were the ideas brought to us by the community. And, you know, sometimes it takes baby steps, but at the same time, these changes, these proposed changes to the community review board, either as the ballot measure or in ordinance, it's just one piece of the puzzle. And as you're also well aware, after the PERF report came out, our police chief and the city have been working very hard to answer those recommendations and to make changes, reforms, from training, biased training, and other kinds of classes, to new equipment, including all those cameras, because a picture's worth 10,000 words, right? And I believe that positive change is happening. And to, at this point, try to create a hammer over the review board, I don't think is appropriate. Other cities do have more acute problems than we do, not to say that we don't have issues that we need to resolve, because we're, by recognizing this, by proposing this ballot measure, by making changes in the city ordinance, all of the reforms that have been made, I think, symbolizes that we do care, and we do want to make sure that we restore trust between the community and the police department. And just on a personal note, I have to say, it's insulting to sit here and listen to people complain about the police actions during that Trump event. We know wherever Donald Trump goes, he creates problems. And so our police department was ready for that. And like preparation anywhere, it seems that when you're really prepared, nothing happens, and that's the good news. They didn't go there to try to create a riot. They went there to make sure that we didn't have a riot on the streets of San Diego. And I commend every man and woman in our police department who went out there that day, worked patiently and with total respect for the community, I believe, in making sure that we did not have the same kind of violence that we have seen in other cities where that candidate has spewed his hate language. So I stand with our police department, just as I stand with our community. And these reforms to the CRB, I believe, are the result of that collaboration and all of us standing together to make change. So I do wholeheartedly support this, and I want to thank all of you for bringing ideas to us and insisting that we listen, that we make changes. And this is, again, one piece of it, and this is one step to any potential reforms there might be in the future with the CRB. Hopefully, this is going to help, not a total solution, one piece to the puzzle, but I believe we're moving in the right direction. So thank you again for your input, and I support this going forward.
We have a motion by Council President Protam Emerald to approve staff recommendation on this item. I will second that. Councilmember Cole?
And I wanted to second that, but...
You did. I'll let you second it, ma'am.
Not a problem, thank you. And I also support our police officers with their actions, because I was holding my breath, not wanting anyone to be stabbed or shot, and they were not. So I commend the officers for being prepared for that, because that's what I thought was going to happen, and it did not. Now, and I want to just say also, I support the Citizens Review Board proposal being brought forward. I also support the name change of the board from citizens to community. It is more inclusive. It gives them buy-in, and I think that it's a good thing to do. And it gives the council and the mayor joint authority over the board. I support that. And it mandates that all police involved deaths be reviewed by the board. There has been progress made by this council to improve the CRB. Council has identified funding in the upcoming budget to provide the CRB with independent counsel, which they wanted, and we're giving it to them. We have also reviewed the CRB's first annual report, which came before the PSN Ellen in April. And thanks to our new executive director, Charmaine Mosley, she's still here. I saw her earlier.
Unfortunately, she had to run to a closed session meeting for the CRB.
Well, I want to thank her for her leadership, and this has not been done in years. So, you know, I support the progress, because it will only get better, because we will make sure that it continues to get better and better. However, I am looking forward to a discussion at a later date that will be giving the board more discretion over the types of complaints they review. But for now, I will support this proposal, and I look forward to reviewing the ballot measure language when this item passes today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cole, and I think one of the things that you and the council members who will be here will need to be mindful of is, once this is approved by the voters, to properly take care of the definition in either ordinance or council policies.
Definitely will.
Council President? Councilmember Gloria?
Thank you, Ms. Leitner, and thank you to your committee, as well as Ms. Emerald's committee, which I serve on, for, I think, the thorough vetting of this proposal. And I would certainly thank Women Occupy for the constructive role I believe that they've played through this process, as well as our CRB members, both current and former, who I think helped us to craft a measure that is worthy of the voters' consideration in November. I want to make a couple of points. Probably the first is that I believe that we do have an incredible police department. Actually, was thanking Chief Zimmerman just a few days ago in the aftermath of Orlando, when a lot of my constituents were feeling very insecure. She and the department stepped up and provided additional levels of patrol, were very responsive, showed exactly what it is to be a community-oriented police department. A lot of my small businesses and others were very much impressed by what was going on there. And I think that that's more of the rule than the exception when it comes to our police department. But naturally, recent history has shown that there are some of our officers who don't make good choices and ultimately need to be held accountable, and whether that's through Internal Affairs or through the community relation, which should be named the Community Review Board. We need to make sure that that works well. And, you know, some of the comments, and I hear the comments, and I understand where they're coming from, when this has been discussed in settings I've been involved with and ones I've observed, there's been a desire to do more. But, Ms. Leitner, I think there's probably a few people more than yourself that understand that not everything belongs in the charter, and that certain steps are needed to be taken in order to accomplish what we want to do. And, you know, I would think about what body-worn cameras have done. If we had a policy that did not address that in the city's charter, that couldn't be flexible enough to address changes, circumstances, technology, that would not serve the community well. I think what we do with this measure is to insert the council's prerogative as a co-equal branch of government to address this issue, and then continue to work on the issue going forward. So this is in no way half a loaf, in my mind. I think it's a very full loaf. I think this is a full and aggressive measure to start taking true steps to making sure that we are holding our police department accountable, and by doing so, I mean, retain the trust of the neighborhoods that we serve. I make this point for two reasons, is that too often issues like this one and others are only interesting for a short period of time. And then the news moves on, people's interests wane. I think we collectively sometimes suffer from attention deficit disorder. The truth is, if we really want to see the change that I think the public speakers have been talking about, the work does not end today. I think you may know that in a couple of weeks' time, this council will have to choose to actually place this on the ballot, and this will be in the context of many, many ballot propositions for which we don't have the money to put them all forward. And there's certainly a risk that this will not be placed on the ballot, because we can't afford to do it. This is probably one of my top two priorities for the November ballot, and I'd hope that folks will come back and make sure this actually ends up on the ballot. And then I hope, once it's adopted, folks will come back with the new council and advocate for making sure that the additional reforms, the ones that are not appropriate for the charter but are appropriate for the municipal code, actually get adopted. And so I make that plea as someone who won't be here for that conversation. And I hope that someone, you know, may pay attention to this, or catch this, or remember it, or put it in their phone to follow up on. But this is, there are additional steps that are necessary that we must take in order to do what I think needs to be done. But I'm extremely supportive of spelling out the council's shared responsibility when it comes to public safety and holding our police officers accountable. I'm very supportive of the name change, understanding that we are a diverse community and that everyone should feel as though they have the opportunity to seek redress, no matter their nationality or immigration status. And I want to thank the mayor for the constructive role he's played so far in helping this council to appropriate the funds for outside counsel, which I would note, the requirement to go through the city attorney is a function of the charter. But I have no concern about that being an issue going forward, particularly based upon the comments of our county review board, which seems to be working just fine. But I'd note that the mayor has been responsive to a number of the concerns, and I think in particularly of looking at the Category 2 complaints, and that's work that does not need to stop or wait for this charter change. And I think some of that is happening now. I'd like to see more of it. I think more will happen once this is approved. Marshall, did you want to say something, sir?
Correct. Those discussions are ongoing. We hope to have a process by which we can analyze Category 2 complaints by fall.
Thank you, sir. So lots of stuff going on here. This is but one step. I don't want to hear anyone say that this is not an aggressive measure. I think it's the right steps to be taken, and it's step one of many more to come. And if folks are as passionate about these issues, I believe that they are, this will continue to be at the forefront of the council's dialogue, both through November and then after November, when some of those additional municipal code changes need to happen. So, Ms. Leitner, I think you know, everyone knows, having an effective police oversight board cannot be overstated. I think the changes that are being proposed today are meaningful reforms that will enhance oversight and accountability. Look forward to supporting this, placing it on the ballot, voting for it as a voter, and seeing these being acted. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sherman?
Thank you, and thank you, everybody who put all the work into this. And like Ms. Emerald said, I was very disappointed with the comments from some of the people And like Ms. Emerald said, I was very disappointed with the comments from some of the people here in the audience. When you start throwing around inflammatory rhetoric like fascist and those type of things, it doesn't do anybody any good. The reason the police were in riot gear is because everywhere they'd gone before on these kind of rallies, there have been riots. The reason we didn't have one is because we let people express their right to free speech. We let them do what they were supposed to do. We gave them a lawful cease and desist and breakup order, and those who chose to ignore that order were slowly escorted peacefully, in most cases, out of the city and the zone. That's what prevented riots from happening in San Diego like they'd happened everywhere else. Loss of property, injuries to people, didn't happen here, because we weren't going to tolerate it. You have your right to free speech, and when that's done, you don't have a right to riot. And seeing a lot of police in force made it so that didn't happen. And when you come down here and start throwing all those kinds of words around, you're not helping anybody, especially now that I find out that people from Women Occupy actually helped craft some of the wording on this. Seems to me like these are people who have an anti-cop agenda, and I'm not going to be voting today to help further that. It was very disingenuous. It was disrespectful. And quite frankly, I think you owe the city and the police an apology.
With that, we do have a motion by Council President Protam Emerald, seconded by Council member Cole, to approve staff recommendation on item 334, and note that there will be a lot of follow-up work required with this. Do I need to specify a date for this to come back? Or... I'm sorry?
August 1st.
This is to come back, Ms. Emerald, August 1st?
Yes.
Ms. Cole, is that acceptable to add to the motion?
Yes.
All right. With that, please vote. Please call the roll. That motion carries seven to one, no, six to one, with Councilmember Zaff absent, Councilmember Alvarez absent, and Councilmember Sherman voting no. With that, we will move to item 339.